I don't know the gavel. Meeting will come to order. From, uh, so, um, welcome to this joint meeting of the Merchant Island School District and Mercer Island City Council for October 8, 2015. Um, from a city standpoint, I'll have Karen call the role and Brian will hand it off to you for, uh, for your half of this. All right. Call the role.
Councilmember Debbie Burtland.
Here.
Councilmember Jane Braun.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ciro. Councilmember Terry Potmeyer.
Here.
Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Dan Grouse.
Here.
Mayor Bruce Bassett.
Here.
And all I need to do is officially call the school board meeting to order. Five oh two. Okay. Very good. You'll do the rest of it after. So, uh, for the public watching, uh, it's, will be, uh, glaringly evident, this is a more casual format than a regular meeting because we're, as you can see, all, uh, sort of round tables with wires and things around us and having dinner as we work on this. But, um, it's great to have everybody together and have this opportunity to continue the strong relationship we've been building. We have, uh, three items of business tonight, first being a school construction update, including Mary Wait Pool and Safe Routes to School, and I don't know from my sheet who's tackling that. Carrie, does it go to you?
Yeah, I think we're gonna start with, uh, a short introduction and I would invite Brian to take a copy of the hard copy of the briefing paper. I'll send that around. For those of you that might have received this copy earlier, there was a typo on the number of classrooms that we renovated, rebuilt. So, the earlier draft indicated there were fourteen and that's incorrect. Most of you know because you attended the dedication that there are ten classrooms. So, I would, um, first start, so we're gonna start with the Mary Wait Pool piece. Um, so the good news to share with you is that the, uh, the district is going to be...
You may turn off microphones.
Great. This, the district is planning to, uh, earmark, uh, $3.8 million to renovate Mary Wait Pool in the 2016 capital levy. And as has been previously discussed at this, uh, joint session in, in prior meetings, uh, we have an interlocal agreement with the city and you have agreed to a ten-year, um, commitment of, uh, operating subsidies over a ten-year period that increase with the cost of living in exchange for the district, um, putting, uh, up to $3 million into the infrastructure to keep Mary Wait Pool, uh, beyond, uh, its, uh, its present, um, infrastructure life. We, in doing some investigation, found that if we added an additional $800,000, so nearly $4 million, we will be able to retrofit all of the major, uh, mechanical and infrastructure systems thereby rendering the pool, uh, many, many, many more years beyond twelve or fifteen, potentially thirty years of serviceable life. The challenge, so that's a great story to tell, we will have that pool, it will have new skin, new windows, new heating systems, new bathrooms, uh, re-lined pipes, that actually not re-lined pipes, but new pipes that will, uh, attach to the filtering system that has been rebuilt or potentially new to extend the life of that pool potentially forty more years. We hope that the dis, that the city will, when it comes time, extend the operating subsidy beyond the ten-year period because that is a critical, uh, piece to allow us to, to operate the pool, uh, in order to have the additional income, uh, because we do make the pool available to the community. So, that isn't for discussion tonight per se, that is, we have a long-term interlocal agreement, uh, subsequent bodies could go and, and extend that interlocal beyond those ten years, so that's a really good story. And then beyond that, the, the liner has been, uh, replaced during the short-term closure, uh, so the briefing paper notes some of the improvements that were made and, uh, we have a great partnership with Olympic Cascade Aquatics, known as OCA, and they are our operator, we subcontract the actual operations of the pool with them. So, this is really a good news story, um, we opened, uh, it was closed for a shorter amount of time than we thought and we have lots of very positive feedback from the community about the improvements that were made, the small improvements. Uh, the grand opening, if you will, some of you may have seen, uh, an ad about its opening being grand, we, the, the real grand opening will be once we retrofit those major systems with the $3.8 million, that will truly then be a grand opening of the Mary Wait Pool. So, that is really the update, are there any council questions or board questions about the Mary Wait Pool situation?
So, just clarifying question, are you gonna be looking for council to extend the interlocal in advance of the vote?
Potentially, we could, um, toss that idea out to the partnership committee, uh, there's nothing imminent in the next year or two that requires that, but potentially the partnership committee, which as you know is a three-member city council, two-member board, uh, working with the city manager and superintendent could, could talk about that and that might give even our community greater confidence that this pool is going to be here for the long term. Any other questions on Mary Wait? Yep. So, with the construction updates, this is a time for our owner representative, Brandy Fox, extraordinaire, who has been with us now for over a year, and we're so happy to have her managing our three projects and Brandy is going to take you through, um, the high school addition, the middle school, uh, addition and, and the, um, Northwood, um, elementary. By the way, the mascot has been selected for Northwood, and I don't know that you know this, but I guess I'm telling it to the community on TV as well, uh, they considered a number of, uh, of potential mascots and the students made the decision to select the Owl. So, Brandy, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Whether, um, whether the three forty names have anything about the parking along Mary Wait?
The parking, um, I don't believe we have plans, Dean, I'm looking for you in the audience, uh, because we have an adjacent area next to the, uh, Northwood School, on Saturdays and Sundays and times that the school is not in session, that parking area would be made available to anybody that, for example, if there's a meet at seven o'clock in the evening or ten o'clock, that is ample parking for, uh, schools to come, uh, but there isn't a, a specific plan to in, increase the amount of parking presently dedicated for that site, it's all about the, uh, major systems.
Great. Good evening, thank you for inviting me, uh, tonight to share with you our progress. Um, at the school district, we've been very, very busy. Um, so first project I wanted to share is the high school, um, as Gary said, we added ten classrooms, so just a brief overview, about 15,000 square feet, uh, we also reconfigured the front parking lot, not last summer, but the summer before, and then relocated the bus lane to, uh, drop-off area to Ninety Second, uh, and then also extended the, uh, loading zone on Forty Second. Um, I think many of you were there for our ribbon-cutting ceremony, the project is substantially complete, um, everyone is in and using the building and so far, so good, good reviews. Um, so we're just working on punch list and closeout activities, we were completed, um, comfortably, on time and, uh, well within budget, so. The second project I wanted to share is Islander, um, that is a partial replacement of the school, so about 93,000 square feet, includes, uh, eight classrooms, general purpose classrooms, two science, two special ed, two shared learning areas, and then a complete replacement of the music facilities, uh, for the building. Also includes gym, kitchen, commons, um, and the administrative and counseling areas. This summer, we tackled the parking lot, um, it's not a hundred percent fine, we have a first lift of asphalt down, but it's completely reconfigured, uh, and seems to be working wonderfully, uh, really has reduced the traffic congestion onsite and on Eighty Fourth as well, so. Um, progress-wise, we are about thirty percent complete with the construction, um, all of our, um, civil and underground stuff is nearly complete, we are working on structural masonry and structural steel, um, this week, we finished the steel on the classroom addition and we are getting ready to start erecting the big beams that go over the gym. So, um, that's progressing well, we have a few footings left at the commons, uh, to kinda close the loop, but we're getting very close on that as well. Uh, we're still on schedule for completion in the fall, it's important to remember on this project that the area that is now the commons and music has to come down for us to complete this project. So, that means abatement, demolition, and then all of the site work, the creation of the big rain garden that sits in the plaza, uh, and all the plantings and pieces that go with that. So, this project will really go fully into the summer and I expect that we'll be doing some plantings in the fall, it's just a lot of site work to complete in seven or eight weeks that we have available. Um, the elementary, I think all of you probably drive by the elementary on a regular basis, so you're really watching that come out of the ground quickly. Um, the new elementary is about 77,000 square feet, twenty classrooms, uh, eight shared learning spaces, and then we have dedicated spaces for, um, special ed, um, developmental preschool, technology, music, um, and then we, of course, include library commons and all the other, uh, spaces that go with the new elementary. Um, Gary was mentioning that the parking area, excuse me, the parking area on the east side of the site, um, so on this site plan, um, to the right-hand side is where the Mary Wait Pool is and that parking lot that you see is our high school parking lot, so, uh, that'll be used during the day by high school students, um, the only entry off that east side will be buses, walkers, bikes, um, and then the high school students who will arrive before the elementary starts. Uh, all of our main access to the building will be off of Eighty Sixth, then you're starting to see that parking lot and drop-off lane take shape. We expect that we'll get the first lift of asphalt down, uh, for that parking area this fall, uh, before winter sets in, and, um, I've got a few pictures for you, it changes so fast, um, we actually had, uh, metal roofing delivered on Monday and all of our metal roofing is pretty much up and installed on the gym and it's Thursday, so Bailey's doing a fantastic job, we're about, uh, forty percent complete on the work, we've topped out our structural steel, we're well into roofing, and you can see by the picture in the lower right-hand corner that our mechanical and electrical systems along with fire sprinkler and, um, all of our rough-in inside the building is proceeding nicely. Um, we expect the brick to arrive this week and then brickwork to start next week, so, uh, well on schedule for an opening, this one will open and be available sooner than the, the middle school, um, it's a brand-new school, we have a lot of things to do, um, in here, so we're hopeful that if we stay on the path we're on, we'll be able to open this, um, you know, late June, early July. And again, well within budget on that project. The last one I wanted to just mention briefly is the work that we did this summer at the Mary Wait Pool. Picture on the left is the day we drained the pool and what the liner looked like, uh, this has a fiberglass liner that is forty-two years old, um, and it was a real challenge to figure out how to get a little bit more life out of it in anticipation of a capital levy in a couple of years, um, and yet not, uh, not take on too much. So, we found a company that was able to come in and clean, etch, and re-fiberglass the liner for us, um, so it looks beautiful, uh, and it's structurally sound, the part that, uh, is still a big question mark is all of the mechanical system, so we still have pipes that are forty-two years old under that pool that we need to get in and fix, but, um, we were able to clean it up a bit and, um, the staff for Olympic Aquatics did a fantastic job of painting locker rooms and pressure washing and cleaning up the landscaping and so it was a real joint effort this summer to give it a facelift. Uh, we were able to complete the liner a couple of weeks ahead of schedule on that project, um, no change orders, well within budget, um, went very smoothly. So, any questions?
I'm just curious whether or not, uh...
I was just, uh, curious whether or not, uh, neighbors have complained or if there's any, any concerns that have been going on during construction, whether it's noise or dust or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, really good question. Um, the elementary school, we have not received a single complaint, uh, on, which is interesting, I thought that is one that we would get complaints on. Um, it, it has a relatively nice buffer, it's kind of tucked down a little bit in the hole and so I think the, the whole houses on Eighty Sixth are not as big of a disruption as luck would have it, there's been a lot of construction going on on the north side of Fortieth, so, um, we just really haven't had any issues there. The middle school, um, is tucked right into the Lakes neighborhood, um, I mean, you know, we are building that classroom addition a hundred and three feet from the property line. So, um, we've gotten a couple of complaints, we had an early, a couple of early starts, um, by the contractor that we've addressed and, um, I had an, actually a comment from a neighbor tonight about a truck, uh, parking in front of their house in the morning, so, you know, a little bit, but nothing, nothing major. All manageable.
Test.
So, I knew you, in the materials, talked about the classroom that was moved at the high school, but because so many in our community now are, are, will return to live here and maybe it, uh, had classes in the old classroom, I wondered if you would just mention it for the public in case they, what we did and so on.
The outdoor classroom? Yes. So, um, just west of the old bus loop on campus, there was an outdoor classroom, uh, built kind of in the woods there that had been dedicated, uh, to a staff member who passed away, and so as part of the project, we had to relocate that or it was gone because of the construction, we relocated it up to the front of the building, there's a really, um, kind of graceful, peaceful, quiet space just to the right of the front entry, kind of tucked in a little area, um, and so the trees that we took down from the high school site, we had milled and dried and made into sixteen beautiful benches, eight of those we put out in the front as an outdoor classroom and recreated this space that was removed, uh, for the construction. And the other eight benches are inside the building, um, some of them in the exact spot where the trees came down, so that's kinda fun. Yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Um, Brandy, you, is there more you've got or are we moving on to the next item?
Is the next agenda item the safe schools, safe routes to schools? Okay. The safe routes to schools, I'll just start that and then I'm gonna turn it over to Ann.
Yes.
So, the next item we were gonna talk about is the safe routes to school, so this really applies to the district campus, to the, uh, pertaining to the new elementary and the high school. Um, I just put together a quick aerial view to give you a little sense of the circulation around here and then I'm gonna turn it over to Ann, uh, with the city, who'll talk about the projects that the city has undertaken, um, in their Safe Routes to School program. So, what you see outlined with the various colors is the district campus, um, Northwood Elementary is shown there in the upper right-hand corner, um, um, at the location of Fortieth and Eighty Sixth. Um, the yellow indicates existing sidewalks or asphalt paths that, um, are currently around the site. The orange indicate new sidewalks or paths that are being put in as part of the construction project, so we have some pretty significant frontage improvements, uh, from Eighty Sixth moving east along Fortieth that are part of the elementary school, and then as part of the high school project, uh, up on Ninety Second from Forty First to Forty Second, we created a sidewalk where none existed before, so that's part of our bus pull-out, but also includes a nice big wide sidewalk, um, to move people through. The area in light blue, which comes down Forty First and then down Ninety First, um, that is not, there's not a designated walkway, but it's a very quiet residential street, um, that both the city and the district, uh, walked extensively as we were trying to figure out what frontage improvements made sense and really felt that that would be the natural path for kids to take, that even if we put a sidewalk from Forty First down to Fortieth, um, that with the traffic that happens on Ninety Second, it would be, it's much more comfortable to turn and walk down that very quiet residential street. The other thing we've noted on here, or in purple, are the pathways, uh, that cross the campus, um, so there's several ways from Forty Second to get across the campus and to the new elementary school, and I think those are pretty, um, pretty obvious from the drawing. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Ann to talk about the city's program.
Okay, what have we got here? Oops. Okay, good evening, I'm Ann Tenahow, I'm the Assistant City Engineer. Um, so, there are a couple pieces in this packet, I'll go backwards, I think, yeah, so that should be in the packet, although it's so small to read, I'm not gonna leave it up on the screen, but this is the map that goes along with that description, and so what I'm gonna do is, uh, talk a little bit about what the city's projects are, those capital projects that we have identified in our biennial budget, um, specifically in place to address the new elementary school and walking routes to the new elementary school. So, the first one is the, is number one, obviously, on, uh, I went to school to learn that, um, Eighty Fourth Avenue Southeast between Southeast Thirty Ninth to Upper Luther Berlin Park, so it's, um, it's just on the west side of the Madrona Crest neighborhood and what we have installed is a wide gravel-surfaced shoulder on the east side of the road, so it's essentially connecting, um, from Upper Luther Berlin all the way to Joyce Park, um, assuming, making, making a, a pathway that kids can either use to walk to school if they so chose, or at least would provide a place for kids to, to wait for a bus, um, depending on whether there's a bus route, um, going through that particular part of town, um, which can serve not only the elementary school or special services to the other elementary schools, but also the middle school, um, students. And so we have done that work, that work is all completed. Uh, two, which is what we're calling a Safe Routes Madrona Crest, um, sidewalk, where it is, uh, gonna be the installation, it's actually a two-phased project, the first phase that's funded is the sidewalk installation between Southeast Thirty Ninth and Southeast Fortieth, so we'll be installing Coogutteron sidewalk on the east side of that section of roadway to provide, again, that safe route, um, that safe walking path to get students from that Madrona Crest neighborhood to Southeast Fortieth where they can then cross the street at the intersection of, um, Eighty Sixth and Southeast Fortieth to get to the school. That project is currently under design, it's, it's a com, it's a combined project, um, with our water system improvement project for that neighborhood, so our expectation is that we'll go to, um, advertisement and be awarded by March of next year with construction of that sidewalk complete before the start of the school year, so before September. The second phase of that project is, has been identified as an extension of that walking path, whatever that might be determined to be, um, along Eighty Sixth to the north towards Southeast Thirty Sixth, that's, um, currently, it's currently in our TIP and currently identified as part of this project in the CIP, but it is unfunded. Um, one of the pieces that we, we would like to see happen or to like to do is that once the school opens and we get a sense of what the walking path is going to be, what the walking conditions are gonna be, how many kids really are walking and what the needs might be. The first phase that's funded is the sidewalk installation between Southeast 39th and Southeast 40th. So, we'll be installing curb guttering sidewalk on the east side of that section of roadway to provide, again, that safe route, that safe walking path, to get students from that Madrona Crest neighborhood to Southeast 40th, where they can then cross the street at the intersection of 86th and Southeast 40th to get to the school. That project is currently under design. It's a combined project with our water system improvement project for that neighborhood. So, our expectation is that will go to advertisement and be awarded by March of next year, with construction of that sidewalk complete before the start of the school year. So, before September. The second phase of that project is, has been identified as an extension of that walking path, whatever that might be determined to be, along 86th to the north towards Southeast 36th. That's currently, it's currently in our TIP and currently identified as part of this project in the CIP, but it is unfunded. One of the pieces that we would like to see happen, or to like to do, is that once the school opens and we get a sense of what the walking path is going to be, what the walking conditions are going to be, how many kids really are walking, and what the needs might be, then we'll be able to really scope and identify what a future phased project might be in that neighborhood. So, once we get to that point, then we will bring that forward to the city council, talk about that through our TIP process, and then through an upcoming CIP capital budget budget process. Three is, part of our safe routes to school, basically the new elementary school project that's in the CIP. And this particular location, or this particular project piece, is to provide sidewalk landings and curb ramps along Southeast 40th at the intersections of 88th Avenue Southeast, at Gallagher Hill Road, and at 92nd Avenue Southeast, or what might also be called Green Bear Lane. And what we're trying to accomplish with that project is to really tighten up those intersections, provide more hardscape at the intersections, so we've got the vertical curb, the separation because of the vertical curb and the sidewalk as a place for students to stand while they're waiting to cross the street. It would be, the vertical curb provides sort of a guide to a vehicle as they're making the corners, they're turning corners, so they're no longer, they would no longer be able to cut the corner, they're really going to have to stay in the roadway. So, we think that would be an added benefit to enhancing the walking conditions for kids that are making their way, not only to the new elementary school, but to the pool and to the high school as well. That project has not been started yet. We would like to get that underway between now and the end of this year, so that we can have construction going in 2016. So, let's see, four, which what we're calling is pathway construction on Southeast 42nd Street. So, this is a piece of 42nd connecting Island Crest Way to 85th Avenue Southeast, and then connecting to an off-street pathway that connects 85th to 86th. That pathway is in place, and has been in place for many years. The section that's sort of a missing link is the walking route along Southeast 42nd between Island Crest and 85th. We're adding this improvement as part of our, as part of a resurfacing project. So, next year, with the plan to resurface Island Crest Way, 85th Avenue Southeast, Southeast 42nd, we will be building an off, what I will call an off-street path, but it's basically, it won't be a shoulder, but it will be separated by the existing ditch line, and we're anticipating that we're going to be paving that pathway. And again, this is something that, for any students that are really, in that particular portion of the boundaries for the elementary school, can use that to walk to school. What I've also noticed is that's a stop for the middle school as well, and so there's a lot of kids that are getting on and off the bus on Southeast 42nd, and are needing to walk towards Island Crest Way, so it's also an improvement for the middle school as well. Five takes us to the south side of the school district campus. This is a project that we accomplished just at the beginning of this year, so in early 2015. And what we have done is pretty much rebuilt an existing pathway along, make sure I get the street right, along 88th Avenue Southeast, between Southeast 42nd to Southeast 44th. There's a pathway on the east side of the roadway, runs along, runs along our reservoir site, and is adjacent to, basically across the street from St. Monica's. So, it makes a really nice connection from the south side of the school district campus down towards the library. And then, we've also added that little spur on, get the street right, on 89th Avenue, I think it's 89th, no, it's Southeast 43rd. So, it's connecting 88th to 89th, and that was pretty much on the north side of the reservoir site. It was overgrown, it wasn't very, didn't have a very pleasing atmosphere for people who might want to walk along there, so we cleaned it up, we resurfaced it, we regraded it, and made it a really very highly attractive, I think, my opinion, walking route for the kids to the school, and actually for anybody who would like to walk along there. So, that piece is done. And then, on to number six, which brings us up to the Southeast 40th Street Quarter, what I've labeled as east of Island Crest Way. So, actually, I'm going to skip around here. I'm going to drop to number seven, because that's easier for me to describe it now. So, seven is, again, is part of that safe routes to school, new elementary school project that's funded in our capital program. And what we are going to be attempting to do in 2016 is make a, so again, on this particular portion of 88th, there is an existing walkway. It's a concrete rock, it's separated from the driving road, driving lanes, by a fairly wide shoulder. So, the walking conditions, in terms of separation and having a hard surface, are already in place. What we would like to clean up, though, is to really define the intersections, so every side street that accesses at 88th, we want to be able to really tighten those up and define those, so that drivers are more aware that there will be children in the area, and possibly crossing the streets at those locations. And then, just doing some general vegetation cleanup, cleaning at the sightlines, making sure there's not a lot of overhang, making sure that there's no trip hazards, but all those little pieces that may make walking uncomfortable for some people, we want to try to minimize as many of those as we possibly can.
Ann, before we move on, you and I, I know, have exchanged some email about neighborhood concerns about speeds there, and I know you've done some work on that. Could you just talk to us a little bit about what work you have been doing in terms of analysis of speeds on?
On 88th?
Yeah, on 88th, and where that stands.
Okay. So, for, well, actually, ever since that neighborhood found out that there was going to be a new elementary school, built where it was going to be built, we've had several requests for speed control on 88th. And so, what we've been doing in the last, it's probably been over the last year, is trying to gather some data on really what is occurring in that particular neighborhood, on that particular street. I've gathered one set of speed volume data, that probably about a year ago, just collected a second set of data, have not had a chance to take a look at it yet. And so, what really what I'm trying to determine is, is there a speeding problem? Speed limit is set at 25 miles an hour. The perception is that people are driving 30, 35, and that's causing some angst from the people who live along that street. So, what I need to figure out is whether or not that is, that perception is really reality. And then, from that point, we'll have to figure out whether there's some physical improvements that may need to be installed. So, not quite there in that level of determination. We have a, sort of as an interim phase, with a striping crew that's working on the island right now, one of the things that I have asked to be installed on this street are some pavement ledges. So, we've got the speed limit signs already in place, and what we'll do is we'll supplement those with some 25 mile an hour pavement ledges on that roadway, sort of that a little added extra emphasis, to see if that resonates with the drivers. It's a really, that's a really, well, the entire island is very tough, because it's very prime for redevelopment at this, you know, right now. 88th is no exception. There's a lot of construction happening on that street and in that surrounding neighborhood, so it's hard to determine if it's, if the concerns and the perception will be long-term, or if they are more short-term because of the construction activity that's happening.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, dropping down, so it's, we're dropping, going back up to six, Southeast 40th Quarter, east of Island Crest Way. So, this project is, I think, is really focused on the intersection of 86th and Southeast 40th. And the project, as it's currently scoped in the capital plan, is to provide a dedicated left-turn lane that's on the east leg of the intersection, so basically along the frontage of the new school. And the way the capital project is scheduled and funded right now, is that preliminary engineering is supposed to be starting in 2016, and then construction of a project would be funded in 2017. So, in essence, we've identified a need, we've identified a project, but we've not, while we've not started any work on that, and at this point, only preliminary engineering is funded. And that's what the city is doing.
I thought the council's decision was to move to funding the full meal deal on that, the much-
No, it's in the TIP. So, the TIP is for 2017, your past budget, there's nothing budgeted for 2017.
Well, yeah, let us follow up and double check that.
Okay.
Because I have the same recollection, but we'll confirm.
If that's the case, and granted, I'm working off of a two-year budget, and so that biennial budget that I get to work off of is 2015, 2016, and I know that the council never makes changes to the capital projects as they've been identified, so forgive me if I misspeak. I just don't want to, you know, jump the gun on anything.
Better to undercommit and overdo it. But Noel, if you could look back at the, we certainly had a robust debate about this.
Yeah, we'll look back. We'll look back, confirm where we stand, and we'll let everyone here know.
Okay, thank you. Can I turn on your mic?
So, the first, nothing is funded for 2017 without a budget approved. So, we put in the TIP, we identified a budget source for, a funding source for it, but until it's actually put in the budget and approved by the council, it doesn't exist, in terms of an approved project. And just so the school board knows, I think it's no secret, I don't like this project. And I'm not saying that it won't make sense in the future, but for the reasons that I've told several of you personally in emails, the, my concern has always been that we are identifying a project for a situation, we yet do not know what that situation looks like. There is no elementary school, there will be the closure of the center roadway in 2017, with the impact on cut-through traffic yet to be determined. We are about to start negotiations with Sound Transit to address the cut-through traffic on 40th, and we don't know where those negotiations are going, and what Sound Transit will do to address that. But the bottom line is, there is no center roadway anymore, so a lot of the motivation to cut through on 40th goes away once the center roadway closes. And so, because right now, people get off East Mercer, go over 40th to Island Crest, turn right on Island Crest, and then go back onto the center roadway at Island Crest, when they're coming from the east side. And when they're going home, they get off at Island Crest, go up to 40th, go over to East Mercer, and go home off of East Mercer. And that's one of the cut-throughs, and the other one is on North Mercer. But those are the two cut-throughs between Town Center and East Mercer. And once there's no center roadway, depending on what happens with the HOV lanes, you know, there may not be any cut-through traffic either, because there's nothing to cut through anymore. There's no reason to cut through anymore. So, and the other thing I have said to several people is, it concerns me greatly that we are creating a situation where we are now having two lanes of traffic. And we all know that pedestrians crossing over two lanes of traffic is much more dangerous than pedestrians crossing over one lane of traffic. And so, these are kids, and the answer always comes around, well, there's a traffic light there. Well, these are elementary school kids. And last time I looked, I don't have a lot of faith in elementary school kids waiting for red lights to cross. And so, if they start crossing, and someone's in that second lane that doesn't see the person crossing, just like you have with every situation where you have two lanes and people crossing like that, you've got a much more dangerous situation. So, I think we're dealing with a circumstance which we don't know yet what the parameters of it are. We have no school, we don't know what 40th is going to look like, and we are potentially creating a safety hazard, where right now, there isn't one. So, I have made it very clear to the council, and I'll make it very clear to the school, where I intend to fight this project next year with the new council, and we'll adamantly fight this project when we get around to dealing with funding it. I just, you know, it may be in 2018, after we know what happens in 2017, this project will make all the sense in the world. But until we actually get some actual traffic through there, we have the school in operation, I don't know how we can say that. And this is a hundredths of thousands of dollars project, which is taking money out of other things that we can do in the city.
Are Danny suggesting that the funding is the key issue, or something else is the key issue in your mind?
As I said, this may be a great project, and once we know what happens in 2017, where it can all sit around the room here, whoever's on the council and the school board at that point, and say, yep, this is a great project, and we should go ahead and do it, and I'll be the first one to sign up for that, if we have actual facts upon which to base that decision. I have heard Ralph tell me, I don't know how many times in the city council, let's base our decision on facts. Right now, we don't have any facts upon which to base this decision. And so, what I'm saying is, you know, we're prepared to spend the money, and we will commit the money to this, but let's have the facts to underline the, to prove that this project is worth something.
Ralph?
I'd like to really express my appreciation to the school district, and to the city, and to Ann, and to Brandy, for really working through this Safe Routes to School, and maximizing the safety around the mega-block in anticipation and preparation for a new elementary school going there for the first time in 35 years. It's a very densely populated area, and we anticipate this to be the most highly walk-to and bicycle-to school. So, this work that you've done, one through seven, is fantastic, and it's great that you're doing this ahead of time, and you've got this planned. And I think it, you know, the safety of our children, the safety of all pedestrians is paramount to our community, and it's a great use of our resources. And also, really appreciate the 6-0 vote in favor of improving that intersection.
And I would just say, you know, as you know, Dan, the way these projects are founded is, the transportation improvements are planned and approved in advance of the construction based on projections. We don't build something, then see how much worse we made traffic, and then decide what we need to fix. So, you know, this, you know, item was part of an overall plan that the city and school district agreed to as part of our application for building the school, and, you know, as part of the whole SEPA process, to decide what those traffic improvements were, based on a series of, a series of traffic analysis, analyses that were done, and the U R engineers and our traffic specialists were involved with. And, you know, a plan was agreed to for the necessary improvements for both safe routes to school, as well as traffic improvements in the area, and our whole plan was predicated on that. So, to then yank a big piece out of it after the, after the school has been approved, and then say, well, we're going to wait and see, you know, how bad it is after the school was built, and then decide if we're really going to do that or not, you know, it's not really the, you know, it really seems like the wrong way to approach this. In fact, I, you know, I'm glad that your recollection is that this project will be approved next summer, because, you know, I feel like we should get this work done before the school opens, and not, you know, open a new school, get everybody used to one thing, and then tear up the intersection, change it, you know, change it again. Let's get this, let's get all this work done next summer, open up the new school with the reconfigured intersection, and all the safe routes to, safe routes to school, and ease the, you know, ease the pain on our, on our community. So, I certainly hope that that's what the council's intent was, and if it's possible to get that work done next summer, I think that would be, that would be ideal.
I would like to echo Ralph's comments, and thanks, and Brian's comments, and especially with respect to, you know, the analysis we've had done already. with respect to, you know, the analysis we've had done already, and the fact that we don't want to change this after the school's open. I would also notice someone who regularly travels west on Island, on 40th Street, to turn left on Island Crest, after dropping someone off at the high school in the early morning, or taking someone back from Mary Way after swimming, that that intersection is a problem, it has been a problem. And as for the hypothetical of two lanes of traffic being more dangerous than the current configuration, the current configuration is, is a hazard. You have cars attempting to squeeze by a car that is signaling left and cannot turn left because there's no dedicated lane, and you're approaching a hill with limited visibility, I think it's already a hazard. So I appreciate the city council moving forward with, with reconfiguring this intersection, and like Brian, and hope that it's done soon and later.
Anything else on this topic?
I don't know if this is the topic, but one reason we're here is to think about the long-term plans. And, you know what popped into my head? There was discussion a decade or so ago about building a boathouse in Luther-Birdbank Park, and potentially putting in a crew unit there instead of having to go across the lake for those students who are participating in crew. The possibility of creating a pathway from the high school to the potential boathouse in Luther-Birdbank Park is something I just want to throw out there. It has to be basically a running pathway, because these people who row are going to be running from the high school to Luther-Birdbank and back every day, and in rain or shine. So I just, I'm going to throw it out there for anybody's comment.
Anyone else? All right. Oh, I think we're moving to emergency drill review with them? All right.
Yeah, so, excuse me, I'll ask Jennifer Franklin, our emergency manager, to, to join us. As I think you all know, back in August, the district and the city partnered in a very significant emergency drill, and involved over 200 participants, and was based on an active shooter scenario, something that we've been practicing the last several years leading up to this full-scale exercise. Jennifer's going to give a brief overview and talk just a little bit about some of the lessons learned. For the benefit of the city council, in November, you're going to get an emergency management update, where we'll talk in more detail about the drill and lessons learned. But tonight, we wanted to just, with both bodies here, provide an overview of what we thought was overall a pretty successful drill. So I'll turn it over to Jennifer.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you for inviting me here today. For those of you who don't know who I am, I'm Jennifer Franklin. I am the emergency manager for the city, and I've also been working with Maryland Police now for over 25 years. Yes, I have five more left, just teasing. But I do want to say a really big thank you to all of the city staff, all the school district, but really to our citizen volunteers. We had over 200 people participate in this exercise, and this was a two-and-a-half-year project, and with all, we couldn't have done it without our citizens. And the students and the volunteers were just amazing. So I wanted to give you a little background about why we did this, and what we did, and then a really brief overview on the lessons learned. And this will be for the council's benefit, a very brief overview, because the final after-action report, as you know, it's not done yet, I don't have all the evaluators' notes back in. So don't take this completely to heart yet. So again, I spent eight of my years with the police department teaching DARE, and that was our drug and abuse resistance education program within the school district. So I had the opportunity to teach K through 12, which was fabulous, it was probably the most fun eight years of my career. But in doing that, I have to say that your kids really became probably the biggest part of my life and part of my job. And now having my own eight-year-old daughter, it really brings home security in our schools and the safety of our children. So on December 14th, 2012, I'm sure all of you remember, there were 28 children and six staff members living at Sandy Hook Elementary, in a town that's very similar to ours. And it was extremely devastating, not just to me, but to our city staff, to the school district. And so we actually banded together and decided that we're going to go ahead and do whatever we could in our city to make our city as safe as possible. So what we decided to do is, we ended up having a three-year plan, and I'll tell you a little bit about our three-year plan. But to give you an idea, our three-year plan culminated this August 20th in a full-scale exercise. This incident in Sandy Hook Elementary was the second deadliest mass shooting in the United States. It caused cities and school districts throughout the US to better prevent, prepare, and respond if a similar incident occurred within their jurisdiction. In 2015, Operation Safe Community, sorry about that, our full-scale exercise, over two-and-a-half-year exercise plan, addressed this concern. The Michigan School District and the City of Michigan, along with assistance from over 15 agencies, 60 volunteers, and 200 participants, spent seven hours on August 20th testing our procedures. The exercise is the culmination of the three-part active shooter series, focusing on how we as a city and school district respond to active shooter incidents. In 2013, a tabletop exercise was conducted. Additionally, there was solid collaboration with the city and the school district operations team, and the Michigan School District did an audit of all of our schools regarding emergency preparedness and safety. Michigan School District also hired an outside consultant for advice and best practices, and they took those actions based on the report. In 2014, we went ahead and had a functional exercise, and basically what that is, it's not quite full-scale, what that means is, is you go ahead and test certain portions of your exercise. So functioning in this situation was, we went ahead and tested our emergency operations center, which is kind of like your direction and control in an actual incident. So if you have a big incident that happens, you have the city stand up, what they call an emergency operations center, which is here, you probably saw at the boil water event. We had an emergency operations center here. We also went ahead and tested our joint messaging between the school district and the city, and then we tested our family reunification process. And in 2015, a training series culminated in the full-scale exercise. This encompassed all components of an actual incident. It encompassed the tactical portion of it, so taking a real school with actual students, and don't worry, they weren't real young kids, these were all people that were usually 16 or 18 and older. And they're kids that have done this before in different exercises, so I had a lot of questions about that. Where are you getting your kids from? These are people that have actually done it before, so they're trained. And we also went ahead and, to include the family reunification site, and then our emergency operations center. So the three areas we tested this year, it's a tactical scene, and what's really interesting about this is that we've changed our procedures ever since Columbine. And unfortunately, as most of you can just hear in the news, it's becoming more and more commonplace. And unfortunately, it's happening more often. So we've had to do some, and change some of our practices tactically to help save children's lives. And so instead of having a situation where it used to be that bad guys in the building, police go in, secure the building, and the fire department has to wait until the police secure this building before they can come in, that cost a lot of children's lives. There was a lot of kids that could have been saved in that interim. So the region has changed the way we do this. And what we do now, we call it one zone procedures. And basically what that is, is police and fire will go into an unsecure area to go ahead and save lives. So we actually have created, and it's not completely done yet, a video that kind of showed the whole exercise in full, so you can actually see what that means. But in doing that, you save children. And that was a big push for this region to go ahead and change the way that we respond to active shooter incidents. The second test, or second area that we tested was the reunification process. And again, it's re-unifying our students to the parents. And lastly, was the emergency operations center. We had found, even with the boil water incident, that oftentimes, who runs this EOC is me, and then a couple other police officers, but in an actual incident that was like this, an active shooter incident or tactical incident, we're not going to be here. And we found that we're not going to have the first responders here to run the EOC. So we actually, starting in January, one of our takeaways is to go ahead and train up a team of city staff and emergency volunteers that are not first responders, that actually have the capability of running the emergency operations center if we were not able to. And so they spent six months training to do this, and so they were actually tested on this exercise to see how well they could handle this kind of, kind of incident, working this without first responders here. So that was our three areas of testing. And so what we take away, and so we ended up having, I believe approximately five evaluators, maybe six, that actually tested or reviewed how we did our procedures. And out of that, this is very high level, so it's not all of the details, we had over, I believe it was 130 different evaluations from different participants and people. So bleeding that down, these were some of the takeaways and suggested improvement areas. So for the emergency operations center, we still need an emergency operations center software, and this council probably has heard this for years now, we've been working for over 15 years for a software. It's very difficult, and so trying to find something that we can use, but also that's regional, that other agencies can come and use, it's one of our takeaways that we're working on. Command staff and tactical at the incident command post, again, it's just a training issue, but you can't have your volunteers and your city staff who run an emergency operations center for this exercise the whole entire time. They eventually need backup, or they need relief. And so what we are going to train our tactical people to do is, when they're done with the scene, they need to come back and relieve the people at the emergency operations center. And it was just, they didn't do that, so that's just a takeaway. Better communication between, again, like anything, communication whenever you have an incident, no matter what it is, is usually the key. It's one of the areas that we always seem to struggle with more and more. We were a little better this time, but we still need better communication between the command post at tactical, the emergency operations center, and the reunification center. On student numbers, victim count, situation awareness, needs to be provided in a timely manner. Job duties checklist for the EOC security, and additional staff to assist in the EOC. The tactical takeaway was, we found this at the reunification site as well, but witness interviewing, if possible, needs to be done at the scene. We just don't have time at the reunification center to go ahead and do that. And kids get together in a gym altogether, they're going to start talking, and you need to be able to interview them prior to them coming to the reunification center. And then the takeaway for the school district is that the school district is responsible for developing their reunification plan, locating their own facility, training their staff on implementation of their reunification plan. It is suggested that the Michigan School District provide information to parents on the overall reunification expectations, so that the parents are aware beforehand on what this process is. We don't want parents thinking that in an incident like this, they can go to the school. The scene will be a crime scene, it'll be closed down, you won't be able to get anywhere near it. So where do they go? They have to have ID. What is the process? So we don't end up wasting their time, and wasting their children's time. So it's just something to educate parents on what the process is. And last, not least, is just continuing the training for staff and students on current lockdown and evacuation procedures, so that everybody's used to it. And I think that's the big thing, is we, if we just keep practicing like we do with our fire drills, it'll become unfortunately, common, not commonplace, but easier for people, easier for staff, and easier for the students to be able to handle a situation like this. So that is my takeaway. We have a really good slide of pictures, but I forgot to put it up for you. But eventually, if you're interested, I can show you the video when that's available. Are there any questions?
I just wanted to echo the appreciation that I know will be expressed here in a few minutes for the, the work that you did, Jennifer, to create a real, as real as can be, experience for staff to feel what it might be like in this awful tragic moment that we hope we never have to visit. And so the assembly of all of the individuals to help us enact that was, was amazing. It was a Herculean effort, so thank you for all of that work that you did. And it helped us, as a school system, think in the moment of what would, what would we really do? How would I communicate with Fred? Or how would I communicate with Tony? What challenges we have with the fact that cell phones might be inoperable, because cell towers would be completely clogged? And what other communication devices do we need to have in play? So that, in and of itself, helped us think about all of the new issues that we wouldn't have thought of in the traditional lockdown, or even in the traditional reunification in the event of, you know, a natural disaster, which we have practiced before. So thank you for all of that work. It has put some new problems on our plates, but ones that we, we want to spend some time thinking about to be prepared for something we hope we never have to deal with.
Jennifer, just to give people a little bit more sense of the regional nature of response to something like this, could you just give us the names of a few of the other agencies that were involved in this, and how they participated?
Definitely. We had over 20, and so I would have Bellevue, we had Kirkland, we had Redmond, King County, and that was King County Sheriff's, but also King County Office of Emergency Management, the public information officers from King County. We ended up having LoCom Dispatch, actually Dispatch for us, I'm sorry? Oh, definitely State Patrol, and all of their reunification. And like what we tried to do with these different agencies, and put them in a place that they would do in a real-life situation. So we have all these varying agencies come in, whether it was Tuck Willa Command, Renton, Issaquah came in, a bunch of different agencies that would actually come in if they're close, Seattle, et cetera. But we ended up, State Patrol was the one group that they don't normally have to do these active shooter incidents. This isn't their, what they're tasked with. So we ended up putting them where they would most likely be used, which is at the reunification site. They did a phenomenal job, really well done. And so I have to say, really just hurricane effort by all of these people, and to have everyone take their time and effort and plan this out, it was a great training, not only for us, but for all these different agencies, that we could not do this on our own. We would have to ask other agencies to come and support us. So it was a great way for all of us to train together, to see how we do it, to see how we run the emergency operations center, to see how we run a reunification center. Most agencies have never done a full-scale exercise on reunification before. They do it tactical all the time, but they never do the reunification. And so I think that was a big piece for State Patrol and everybody else to see, was like, wow, this is how you do it? This is how, you know, it gives them ideas to take away as well. And for us to regionalize it, so that I can respond to Issaquah and know that they're going to be doing it in the same way. Yes, Jane, sorry?
Real quick rundown on what is the reunification process, and is there a reunification site assigned for each school?
Jennifer, can you just repeat the question?
I sure will.
I think that's not working.
Definitely. So Councilmember Obama's asking, so what is the reunification process? What does it look like? And we as a region really are trying to truly standardize this. This is not something that's standardized right now. You can probably see in the active shooter incidents that have happened, whether it's Mary's, or Issaquah, or different areas, it's different for the level of, of grade. So elementary is going to be a different reunification process, maybe so than a college, or a middle school, or a high school. What is required, though, if the kids are under 18, they're going to have to be released to a parent, or to somebody that is on the emergency list, and they have to have identification, because the school is responsible to release that child to somebody that's on the list, because they have to be in their care. So that's a bit more difficult than a college, where if they're over 18, you can just bus them to a different site, because your, your crime scene, your incident, is going to be a crime scene. You can't reunify there, it's just, that's not a possibility. So you have to take these children, or these students somewhere else to be able to reunify. So the process is, is they need identification to pick them up, you have to be able to log these children in, hold them until the parent or whoever gets there can pick them up. But also, you've got other issues with tracking all of these children. Which children went to the hospital? Which children unfortunately may be in the scene, maybe they ran off? So it's tracking these kids as well, and trying to go ahead and locate that. We had a great response, we had the medical examiner's office support our exercise as well. And it's the practice and process of, what does this look like from a media standpoint, educating the parents and helping them through it? So it's a very big, it's a big deal, so.
And I know we're on live television, and for people that might have just switched in, this is a drill.
Yes, yes.
There was nothing real about the events that we're talking about. So that was what we were reminded to do as we spoke on the radio, because anyone could pick up a dispatch radio that we had to keep reminding ourselves that this was a drill. So that's why I wanted to make sure that anyone who was listening in knows that we're not talking about a real event.
What is, what happens next in your, what's the next drill?
I take a vacation. I'm teasing, sorry. You know, right now what we're doing is, I do the after-action report, and so we will go ahead, and whatever corrective actions we come up with, we try to fix those. So this coming year, as some of you may know, 2016 is Cascadia, and you may have heard of this. This is a four-day subduction quake international, regional exercise, very big exercise. So our participation this coming year will be in the Cascadia earthquake exercise. In terms of what we take away with the schools, I think from our end, it's going to be continual training with the school district on our procedures, on our lockdown procedures, our evacuation procedures, and even assisting with reunification, if they choose to do that as well.
And one of the challenges that we have, and Jennifer mentioned, it would be nice to standardize something. We are unique in that we are an island, and we're limited by this geography. And there are just very few major arterials to move children back and forth. So we're challenged with not having children on buses that are passing their frantic parents who are wondering what's going on. So we have to figure out... So we have to figure out the right reunification site on the north and south end, a site that would be able to handle the number of students that we would have to reunify, so the logistics involved for us are different, they're unique because of our geography and the size of our community.
So just to finish up the sort of second part of the question, and maybe it's more of a comment than a question, first, I really appreciate everything you've done in this, Jennifer, and I think that there's nothing more critical for terms of our community than being prepared for, for, you know, God forbid, something like this, or what could be any other type of incident, which could be a mass casualty type incident. And I'll preface this by saying that in my former life with the cruise industry, I used to run the emergency operations center for the nine years I was in charge of fleet operations. So I have a lot of sympathy for and understanding of what Jennifer, all the work that Jennifer has put into this. The one thing I would encourage the city and the district to really think about going forward is to do an unannounced drill. There's nothing that's going to test us more than an unannounced drill. And to actually, so that Gary doesn't know what's going to happen, that Noel doesn't know what's going to happen, and it just happens. And you started off by saying this is a drill, you make sure everyone knows it's a drill when it happens, so no one goes crazy on it, but you just, that's the best way, from my own experience, of testing what we're really doing. And until you do it unannounced, you're never going to know what you don't know. And so I wouldn't, I hopefully sometime in the future, we can get to the point, we have enough confidence in what we've trained for, that we can do something unannounced, and that, that's my personal, personally, I'd love to see us get to that point.
Benson?
Again, you folks should be commended for all the hard work that you've put into doing this drill. Sadly, of course, these incidents do happen more and more, seemingly happen more and more often. And of course, some of the discussions in the world of politics have circled on access. So I'm just kind of curious, as far as the school district, I mean, as far as, what is the school district doing as far as trying to maybe not limit access, but at least monitor the access to the school buildings before an incident like this happens?
So we have established perimeter fences around all of our campuses, which has, did occur following our audit. We did not have perimeter, secure campuses more than a couple of years ago, so that is one area of concern that we've addressed. At the high school level, we had a experience with community members having access to the stadium. There was a men's football league, for example, that you may know about or have heard about. And a few years ago, I wondered what these gentlemen, middle-aged men or young-ish men in their twenties, were doing on a high school campus during the school day, and said, oh, we're the men's football league. So we created a secure environment by having a keypad that was accessible with a fob, where the only people who could get the fob would be those who had had a background check. So it would cost five dollars a year, we had some local residents to say, look, I'm over sixty-five, I walk the track, I'd like to know, can I get the fob without paying the five dollars, excuse me, and we did. But it was important to us that we knew, we screened who those individuals are. So those are a couple of examples. We have instituted a locking mechanism on every door, so that a classroom door can be immediately locked, so that no outside person can come in. Those are a few things that we've done. I'd be hesitant to go in much more detail about those, but know that this audit that we had a few years ago, we could take steps to ensure that our campuses are more safe.
Thank you. Sure.
It's a somber topic, and I appreciate all the work that's been done to alleviate impacts as much as possible. Two questions, one was, obviously we've done it, Gary mentioned that there's some unique geography that we're addressing, have we participated in drills for other communities in the way that they've participated with us?
We have, and so what's been really good about this for Redmond, Issaquah, Lake Forest Park, Shoreline, University of Washington, is that when they do have any type of similar exercise, we will participate with them. And so luckily, our police and fire have been able to watch and see Redmond's full-scale exercise. Again, it was specifically tactical, but at least we could see what they did. The same with Bellevue, we were able to go ahead and see what they were doing. And the goal being that if we practice together, and you start to know people and know each other, when you actually have an incident, those are the people you rely on, and those are the people you know what to do, and what their practices will be similar to yours. So that is the goal. I mean, ideally, like with our lockdowns, with reunification, with any of the procedures we do, would be to regionalize it. And if, and I always say this to the state, I said, if there was a way you could just sit and say, this is our reunification plan for the whole state, this is what we're doing as an EOC, this is what we're doing for our command post, it would make it so much easier for us first responders. But we are home of a state, which means everybody gets to make their own decisions, and it makes it a little more difficult because people can do what they want, so.
And just one other follow-up question, it's more on the preventative side, I suppose, but I, was that a presentation from a police department, school district in Michigan, where they've been doing some work that, training staff to respond if there's an active shooter or somebody's in a different way than we might naturally respond in that situation? Have you incorporated that in the emergency?
Exactly, and that's what basically all of King County, if not the whole state, has done, and most states have started to do that. And I think what they are doing is, what we're talking about, is we don't sit and, with Columbine, prime example, they didn't go in. They were taught at that stage in tactics to go ahead and wait for SWAT before they went in, and a lot of kids died because of it. Ever since then, all of us have changed our procedures, now we actually, we're taught to go straight in, we just go straight running towards the gunfire if it's only woo. So that's why in our exercise, that's what happened. Our man, this is our school resource officer, he was the first person there, like in a real situation, he had to be by himself, which is what he does, and engage, and that's what we're trained to do, so.
And that did happen, I understand, in Roseburg, where the first two responders were police, local Roseburg police officers, and they were exchanging fire before all of the other units had arrived, so they actually did do that.
Looks like we're running low on questions. I do want to just, Jennifer, get you to do just a bit of a shout-out to your volunteer community, because you've done a great deal of training, and you've had a wonderful response to the offers of training from community members who've stepped up for not just this kind of emergency, but lots of others. And can you just talk for a minute about those folks? Because when one comes into the EOC, which you see are a whole bunch of people who are staff, but then a whole bunch of people who are just, you know, engaged citizens who have volunteered their time to be available for this and to take the time to get trained.
Thank you, Mayor Bassett, I actually would love to talk about this. This is probably our big one shining, there's many shining areas, but when we had the evaluators come in and make a comment, they said they've never seen such a big cadre of volunteers doing so much work for us. And we have, I mean, on my list now, over twelve-hundred-and-forty-one volunteers, three-hundred of those are badge, which means that they're background and credentialed, so they can go and work in a reunification site, they can go and work in the EOC, and they're trained. And so from a small city standpoint, that's a lot of people. It's wonderful, and the thought is, and the reason for this is, is we are an island, and we have very little staff that actually live here. And so if something bad does happen, it's really our volunteers, until we can get to the island, by whatever means, they're going to be running the show, for the most part. So yes, I have to say that, just one big name I can say really quickly, Julie Gardner is amazing, she spent hundreds of hours working on this exercise to make this happen, she's just a truly terrific person, and there's a lot more people I can talk about, but fabulous people. And we could not have made this happen without them and without their support.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm not sure, is this third item, the third item, or did we sort of mesh, catch that together already with our previous items?
Yes. So I just had a few closing comments, but I didn't want to preempt any other comments that anyone might want to make. Okay, so it's time for me to go. So this is, okay, so this is an opportunity that we have twice a year, to come together and to further our relationship. I look at this as relationship building and extending, as much as it is about the actual work that we try to get done, like the interlocal agreement with Mary Waitpool. There's a lot of cooperation that we have in this small community, rather medium-sized community, and I just want to express my appreciation to all of you. This is hard work, it's hard to be a public official in a time when others tell us how to do our jobs. It's time, it's just a difficult community to be in, in general. And this is a time when Director Berman is going to be rotating off of the board in the coming weeks, and Director Emanuel will be rotating off the board in a couple of weeks, and I know there's an election. I just want to say that it has been a great privilege to work with all of you along the years in a spirit of cooperation, and I've appreciated each of you and the commitment that you bring to this table, and to Noel for the great partnership that we have as a, as the two executives running the two public agencies in the zip code. So that's what I wanted to leave, and I think part of this event is to have an opportunity to be together and to commune, if you will, over some meal and to enjoy the company that we have as well. So I feel like we didn't need to take all of the time that we had, and that this is an opportunity to say thank you.
You mentioned previously when we met that this, a little bit of this was breaking bread, but actually, it's breaking churros. It's a good meal, thank you for supplying it tonight.
I'd just say, comment to Pat, and has been around a long time, and I have, and this kind of cooperation between the school district and the city has not always been. I'd just like to acknowledge that, there's been tough times when it's not been so amicable, and it really is reflective of leadership, really, that gets us together and points out common goals and really fosters the cooperation. So I think it's our leadership that makes it happen.
Yeah, well, thank you, Jane, I mean, you just pointed out that that is the norm now, that we have a cooperative relationship in so many areas where we work together, and though occasionally, we have differences on, you know, some line items, you know, for the most part, we, you know, we really work well together. So I want to thank the staff and the council for your role in that. You know, we just discussed at our last meeting, and approved the interlocal for school counselors, and all of the, you know, board members just, you know, expressed at that time, and I'll reiterate on their behalf now, appreciation to the city for that continuing partnership. It's such a, you know, it's an extremely unique thing that we have, and it's just such a valuable resource in our community. We heard last year about the challenges many of our students face with anxiety and stress, and, you know, and having those, having those counselors in the schools is, you know, is such, you know, is so critical, because we thank the city for the commitment you've shown in your resources to help keep that program going, and we hope it will, you know, continue long into the future. And this, you know, this emergency drill is just another fantastic example of the cooperation and the commitment that the city has shown to supporting the school district and helping keep our kids safe, which is, you know, we all recognize the highest priority that we share. And, you know, also on the pool, you know, another area that we've had, we've had ongoing or a long-time cooperation and ongoing, and we have a great, you know, great story to tell now on the pool with the recent changes and the future changes that hopefully will be approved by the voters in our upcoming levy. So behalf of the board, thank you to all of you for continuing this great partnership, and especially to the staff and the two of you for all the work you do to have these two, these two organizations working really well together.
I just would echo the same thoughts, as long as we're at last meeting together for both of you, I'll point out, Brian, you know, you came on after I came on, and it's been good, it's been good working with you. Pat, on the other hand, my first dabble into politics, Pat was on the school levy committee, and I met her there, and then I remember interviewing Pat about public engagement and as part of a class I was taking outside of this, and thinking, wow, here's a sage, wise voice who's involved at the highest level of politics, and I had no idea where I was going to end up at that point. In some ways, I wish I'd stayed where I was. But Pat, it's been, it's been wonderful working with you, and you will be sorely missed. Yep. All right, I think with that, we are, as a council adjourned, and you were in recess, I guess.
Yeah, so we'll call, record recess until probably six-thirty, we can, yeah, we'll resume our regular meeting at six-thirty.